Call the order, everyone, please silence your cell phones. Stand, listen to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Ann, could you do the roll?
Jessica McLean.
Here.
Sierra.
Here.
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 Here. We have some recognition?
We do. I can read, Tim can read. Read.
Have our individuals here?
Yeah, Kirsten in the area one row.
Yeah.
National Merit Scholarship Program. Three RB students have been named commended students in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Approximately 34,000 commended students to the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2018 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards, commended students placed among the top 50,000 scorers. More than 1.6 million students have entered the 2018 competition. Congratulations to Rachel McLean. Congratulations, Rachel. Why don't you turn and take a quick picture so your parents can get a picture. There you go.
Thank you, everyone.
Good job, Rachel. Benjamin Schulte, or Schultz? And Jacob Wardzala. All right, Kristen, those are the only?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job. You guys can run, now's the time to run. She should get a dinner or something. Right?
That's right.
Student Association Report? It looks like we're down a couple, where's that?
Yes, we're missing two people. Okay, all right. Let's start off, we have our blood drive next Wednesday, November 1st. We started signups today in all lunches, and that'll be until Wednesday. And we're hoping for about a hundred people to sign up because usually that'll get us around a hundred pints because after like deferrals and no-shows, so that's the head. And then also, if you guys want to donate, you can. If you don't donate, add the one at RB. If you donate at Life Source, like Place, you can use the code 313 and that'll go towards RB's numbers.
Do we have that on the webpage anywhere so that somebody looked about our blood drive? Maybe we should ask Mr. Mannan or Ms. Matanin about getting that up there.
Okay.
I know board members are always looking to donate blood, so 313.
Also, in the coming weeks, we're gonna be writing letters to the troops for Veterans Day. So, starting Veterans Day and going like all through the next week, we're gonna have like a ton of letters. We're asking for like staff donations and like little like thank you notes so that every student can like write one. And we already have a place to send them and they'll be sent out to the troops for the lives. So that's a really nice thing that we're gonna do.
We are also, we're also working on Thanksgiving baskets, Santa Claus and the coat and blanket drive. And next Monday, October 30th, Representative Luis Gutierrez is coming to school. And the student blood discussion kind of thing is 6:30 to 7:15, I think he changed it, in the auditorium. And at lunch, students are given opportunities to write down questions that he'll be answering during that time. And so we have a lot of people from different clubs sign up to join us.
Great. Make sure you talk to, you know, that your blood, your coat drive and your Thanksgiving drive, I'm sure there's, if we posted that stuff on the webpage, there's people within the community that would like to make donations to help contribute to those things.
Usually we get a ton of donations at like the turkey tournament because all the parents are reminded that we're collecting stuff, so.
Okay, good.
Any questions?
Any questions for us?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything's going well?
Yes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Grishan, if it's possible, could we possibly skip to the audit?
Sure, let's move to the audit. We have an individual here, our auditor's here, so we can do the audit.
Chris, you wanna come up? Scott, you wanna introduce Chris?
Sure. Chris is from Evans Marshall &amp; Peace. He did our audit for the last three years, is it Chris or four?
Oh, I think this is going on.
Your fourth?
More than that, this could be the second or third.
With you taking over doing it.
I think it's the fourth year.
Fourth year.
Yeah.
We used to have one of your senior partners.
Who used to have Paul Turner?
He would've been doing all the work behind the.
I've been doing.
The second or third time you've come here.
Right. Third time, yes. I've been with the firm almost 10 years now, feeling old.
Well, it's improved in the last couple of years.
I appreciate that.
We're trying to recognize that.
Thank you.
Still got 40-something questions to answer, so we're gonna get you by the way.
I already answered 55.
But you're ready, we went through them last week, ready to go.
We did, so I'm gonna kinda do something just a little different this year. I'm not gonna run through detailed pages in the audit. I'm kinda just gonna do a summary and then I'll open up for some additional questions, okay?
Why don't you do a summary and then answer the questions you received? Is that okay? Or is it some, most of them answered in your summary?
I don't think we should, we, you wanna go through every question? I don't think we should.
As long as most of them are covered in your summary, it'd be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, so before I begin with the summary of the audit, I'd like to thank Dr. Skinkis, Scott, and the financial staff for their hard work and preparation for the annual audit. This year, we completed the audit in a timely and efficient manner. I did not run into any problems or issues. Reporting and controls were sound. Scott has done a really good job transitioning into CFO, especially over the last couple of years. Mr. Walsh provided me with questions relating to the audit and the financial statements, which I had previously responded to. After my summary, I'll ask to take any unanswered questions from the board. For fiscal year '17, the district's estimated financial profile score is 3.7 or recognition, the highest score in ISB's Financial Designation System. This formula is based on five ratios, fund balance to revenue ratio, expenditure to revenue ratio, days cash on hand, percent of short-term borrowing, and percent of long-term debt margin remaining, which the district has excelled in all five of these ratios. Operating fund balances increased from roughly $20.86 million in fiscal '16 to $21.52 million in '17, an operating surplus of about $700,000. Just to note, the audit is prepared on an accrual basis. Excuse me. While the board receives its monthly reports on a cash basis. The main difference between these two are such. The cash basis accounts for revenue only when money is received and for expenses only when money is paid out, while the accrual basis accounts for revenue when it's earned and expenses when they are incurred. The way that Cook County distributes its taxes makes it very difficult to budget under either method. In fiscal 2017, subsequent tax collections, which means 60 days after the year end, were about $11.2 million compared to $10.39 million in '16. That's almost $1.5 million more received in the prior fiscal year. The taxes also fluctuate the district's fund balances. While the district receives a great amount of taxes upfront, those monies are not distributed again until late February or early March of the following year. That's seven months without receiving any property tax distributions, which is about 60% of the district's revenue. A few other items. The district paid about $3 million down on their bonds while issuing two new capital leases. The capital leases were two new Chevy buses and then 13 Canon copiers. This information can be found in the debt section of the audit report. To note, the previous copier lease contract was an operating lease agreement. The only remaining operating agreement is the Rockefeller parking lot. The details of those leases can be found on the operating lease section of the report as well. Lastly, for fiscal year 2018, so going forward, GASB is requiring that all OPEB reporting, which is other post-employment benefits, be in line with the pension disclosures adopted under GASB 68. This new standard, GASB 75, it's called Accounting and Financial Reporting for Post-Employment Benefits Other Than Pensions, will be adopted by the district. And if not, a qualified opinion would be issued, which I obviously don't think the district's not gonna do this actuarial study. I've been talking with Scott about this new standard. He's on board with this, and I've given him a few names of some actuary firms that he should be getting to the board within the next couple of months so we can complete this study.
Can you explain that in English? Because the public and the board.
Well, we.
He studied to GASB, which you should tell people at GASB.
Right, GASB is Government Accounting Standards Board, so that's the board that is underneath all the financial reporting for governments. We do have an OPEB study right now, and you gotta ask a question about why are these numbers the same? GASB is now going to an annual report for OPEB just like TRS and IMRF. So now that note will be just like the TRS and IMRF note because they want to have all retirement issues bundled into one standardized note.
So we have to do our own?
Yes, that study is done by a third party, which we have to hire an actuary, which we have in the past. Three years ago, we used a fellow by the name of Tim Sharp, but he's no longer in business. So there's a few other firms out there that have been doing this study.
And what types of post-retirement benefits would fit into that?
I think the only thing for this district would be health insurance. So, anything paid out of pocket from the district when someone retires would be included in that study. Because everything else is uncovered under TRS and then IMRF.
And that should be continuing to go down if, eventually be zeroed out because we don't have. Right? I think we're talking two or three, two or three contracts ago, there was still the opportunity for retirees to stay in the district insurance. That's no longer.
Right, but isn't there people that are currently retired that are still receiving these health benefits?
Yes, I'm saying.
So until every person is deceased, then that study would obviously have some sort of financial impact. There are some districts that, once it becomes small, I can make the decision that the study's immaterial and then going forward, we wouldn't have to do that. But for districts with this many employees, that could be a long time.
I would do a calculation on number of employees, roughly, how many more? Because it's not till they, we gotta till they go to Medicare, is it not?
Yeah, it's, Chris.
So it's like 10-year window for these people. And we're only talking about, that's no longer in contracts. So we have a legacy issue with these. So I would look at the total potential dollar amount. I don't, we may get it under the threshold of immateriality.
I mean, even as of right now, under the previous OPEB study, we had 48 members that were active, so currently working, 24, so 44, 46, I'm sorry, that until they pass away would be.
Not until they pass away, they're only eligible until they're eligible for Medicare. Right.
Oh, right, okay, right, right.
Until '65.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So maybe it would be immaterial, we won't have to do it.
Yeah, because of.
Because it is pricey.
Yeah, because of contract.
We'll check on it.
We'll check on it, you'll look at the numbers. See how many more years is remaining on the number of participants.
Your job is to make sure we're following all the stackers.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. No, it's fair, we'll see.
I mean, if we just talked to the actuary, they may come back and say this is, there's two people on here, it's not substantial, we'll need to do it.
All right.
I think that's kind of my summary. If you can kinda go over some.
I have the answers. You need to go through the answers to the questions.
You wanna go through every?
I'll save you, you don't have to go through all of them. Explain to everybody why the prior cap, copier lease was an operating lease and why the new one is a capital lease.
I mean, in a nutshell, the prior copier lease is, there's more to it than what I'm about to say, but really in a nutshell, an operating lease is, when the lease is over, you have to give that equipment back.
Right.
A capital lease is when that lease is over, that equipment is yours to keep. That's really the main difference.
And so the impact on our audit for that is?
Well, what happens with that is it becomes part of your debt because it's no different than you going to the car dealership leasing or purchasing a vehicle, you're paying the bank until that term is paid up. Once you're paid up, then you receive the car. So it negatively impacts your legal debt margin, but it's very minimal.
Okay. Chris, I want you to go through some of the questions that Mr. Walsh submitted, and then what I do is I send those out after this meeting to the board. And then if there's specifics, we carry on individually between the board member and the auditor.
That's fine.
So just summarize the key issues. I know you have them all down because we went through them last.
I mean, do you wanna just go through every one of them?
No, I could.
You wanna just?
I've skipped going through them.
Okay.
On page, and I don't, I'm looking at last. I'll have to look at your audit before because my comments were from last meeting. So on page 13 of your report. Under the property taxes levy for general purposes.
What page you got, I'm sorry?
13 of the audit report.
Got it. Right.
So, on the property taxes levy for general purposes.
Right. So you're asking if there is.
Yeah, why?
The reduction here due to the accrual accounting?
Yes.
The answer would be yes. The rule.
It's what you were saying, what you said earlier, that it's the million, the difference in how the taxes were collected.
Right.
It's the carryover two-month period, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because we actually, on a cash basis, we had more tax receipts in 2017 to 2016, right?
Right.
Well, we got two payments, one in July and one in August. And since they were within the GASB 60-day rule, you had to accrue them back.
Correct.
So even though the board is seeing reports that those are counting on our cash basis from the treasurer's office, from an audit standpoint, you've accrued them back.
Correct. That's the rule, 60-day rule.
Okay.
And then on Exhibit A, those 60 days are pulled out as well. So they let you have the 60 days on the fund financials. In the statement of deposition, they pull it out. But Exhibit A and Exhibit B are kinda misleading. I always say, look at the fund financials for that.
Okay. And on page 17.
Sure.
Under revenues, and it's in other places, but you list the state on behalf retirement revenues of 8.9 million.
Right.
Why don't you explain to people what that is? And this is the first year we actually, you put in the notes.
Right.
That we should've had there on behalf.
Right.
Never broke them out before this year, right?
It was, more and more accounting firms are showing this number separate instead of bearing it within state sources. Other reason for this is this number's become so substantial that I think it makes a clearer picture for the board and management to see that number pulled out and then you can really compare your taxes and other numbers. So that's why that was pulled out.
Okay. But it is, it's payments where we get, the state pays the money directly.
Right, that's the payment on behalf of the state for retirees. So it could come into.
Doesn't even go through the treasurer or through our account.
Correct, that's a number given directly to us by TRS at the end of the year from a GASB report that's just booked from us as a revenue and expense, net effect of zero.
And on page 22, this is probably a real question for Scott and not you, but.
We have, I have answers for this.
The agency funds are the council or the fiduciary that don't go through the treasurer we have in the bank in Riverside, right?
Correct. These are your student activity funds.
Okay.
So that, we do have in the audit, there's a schedule in the back that details all the student activity funds. And I know you would ask why part of it had went up, and we do have answers for that because me and Scott did both.
Well, I looked at the, I always look at the, compared to last year.
Right, right.
In the last three years, this balance has gone up by 33%.
It has, and there's, for '17, lacrosse was a new activity, so that was part of the main reason why the balance had increased.
But that only went up like 2%?
Right, then we had cheerleading, the cheerleading activity went up from 1864 to over $10,000 and then drama production went from 146 to 226. So between those three that created the increase. And sometimes it's just timing issue from one year to the next and then will pay out when school starts the following fiscal year.
And then on page 25. You changed the explanation of the major, not major funds and include deferred outflows of resources and deferred inflows of resources.
Right.
Was that just clarifying what was in there to be changed the way?
Yeah, no, it was just for clarification. When GASB 68 came out, they implemented deferred inflows and outflows, so that should've been added, that should've been added last year. That was just for clarification.
I think that I have the answer to the other one. And then on page 28. Again, you changed the, maybe just the way you changed it, but for instance, in the prior years, we had addressed furniture costs. Is it all fully depreciated or?
No, it, we, I kinda just bundled that into equipment and vehicles this year, just. Then really, the problem too is, we haven't had a fixed asset appraisal there in a number of years, so I've been having to work from the previous appraisal. And those are substantial in cost, and I've been able to just calculate the depreciation on my own instead of putting the burden on the district of spending upwards of $10,000 to $20,000 to get an industrial appraisal company to come in here.
Okay. And on page. Page 29.
Uh huh.
$69,000 prepaid to ComEd listed there.
Right.
Does anybody know what that's for?
Okay, so I mean, I know all about this as well, and I responded to the question from the Township Treasurer School Audit Report. That monies is this balance, and the problem on the treasurer's side, they don't get the audit entries until after they're done, so that's why the balance.
It's the same item, they're just different figures.
Correct.
Okay.
And when I inherited the audit, the previous auditors had booked a prepaid amount for $244,000. And when I had gotten here, I started looking at the bills. So the bills do have a credit on there, and it seems as it's been fully consumed, but the amount was so substantial, we just decided, or I decided to just amortize it over the next couple of years just to bring the balance down as we go. I'm not quite sure if that's a completely accurate number, but it's too material for me to just write that entire amount out for the audit. So, as, I think two more years, that number should, will be written off.
So we aren't getting credits anymore?
The credits have been eaten up, but the previous auditor had set this amount up and had whoever came in next.
What was it for? Why?
It was for.
Advanced payment. Why'd we make an advanced payment that was 200-some thousand dollars to?
To be, I don't really, I don't believe 100% that that was an advanced payment. It was just, it was an error and it's something that I just couldn't write off. So I had to, that's something that, I'm not even sure if the previous auditor would even know why they even set that up. I mean, I could, would you, would you like me to write it off next year?
You're the auditor. If it's not supposed to be there, it's not supposed to be there. I thought, I was gonna tell you, call ComEd and tell them we want our 69 grand. There's one program they have where they should have that kind of money for us.
Right.
Prepaid, that I'm aware of.
I mean, I guess it's twofold. I think we probably should contact ComEd. The amount through my Ed fund is immaterial, but the amount as a write-off is, so it's not something that I was like, okay, I'm gonna call ComEd or have Scott call ComEd for that, but we probably should.
It's under Section N on page 29, right?
So let's just.
J.
Maybe shoot an email to ComEd, Scott, and see what's going on.
Yeah, unless there was a deposit given at one point.
And then if not, then next year, I'll just write the remainder off so it's completely accurate.
I mean, that's what we should find out, maybe if we made a deposit and we didn't, we should make sure we got all the credits or not.
And we checked the bills, the bills were just.
And the bills aren't showing on you, the credits.
No.
Because whenever you do overpay ComEd, they show you a credit on the payment.
Right.
Or if you did a deposit.
I got a note, Scott, you got a note down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Tim, you have any other question? Yeah, I didn't understand on the, and again, some of them are just what you changed compared. On page 32.
32.
It's on the.
Right.
The interfund loans and transfers. Interfund loans are used to number two, use unrestricted revenues collected to finance various program accountants or other funds in accordance with budgetary authorizations. You changed, I guess that's correct.
I did change it.
Why? You're explaining.
Interfund loans and transfers. This note's now become more of a standardized language note where it's kinda just, needs to be that way.
Okay. Really, I had a bunch of questions in the capital, which you already answered. One short answer, so. And then the other ones were just curiosity, like some of the numbers seem like they should change on an annual basis.
We can go through those.
I'll look at, you explain them?
I really, I explained them as best as I could, yes.
I don't think they should burden everybody's. And the same thing, when a couple of them were asked, doesn't appear to match last year's, but I'm sure you explained those, right?
Correct. Yeah, if it didn't match last year, there's a, there's a rhyme or reason for it.
Okay. I mean, is the numbers from last, this year for last year are different?
Well, right, and it's, part of those is from that retirement, the, it's more of the pension notes. Again, those numbers are given directly to us, so the actuary for TRS or IMRF goes back to change something, they're gonna change our numbers going forward as well.
Could you go to page 62, though?
Sure.
The excess of expenditures over budget.
Sure.
For the year ended, the one you're auditing, June 30th, expenditures you could budget in educational account by 9 million.
Right.
I don't think that on a cash basis, they did.
Well, they did not because we did not budget for the on behalf portion.
Right.
So that is basically your difference. On behalf was.
And that's you saying.
8.95.
Yeah. So people understand, it's the change in showing the on behalf is what, this is truly an accrual. Did GASB accrual rules that are making this difference?
Correct, and I kinda did explain that.
You did explain it.
Yeah. I mean, I could be more, a little bit more detailed, but that kinda says it right in there. And then the additional small variations are covered by the district's existing fund balances and/or from the operating surplus for '17.
Yeah, I think the rest of them are not worth taking people's time on this reading the explanation you gave us on those. Chris, you sent those electronically, correct?
I did. I'm sorry to interrupt, if the explanation isn't suffice, you know.
I'm sure that.
Go back to Scott and me and Scott can work it out and we'll get back to you.
So Chris, one thing I wanna make sure we, and maybe you can direct me to the best page to show this, but you and I and Scott went through this. And I think it's important that we just highlight this both for the public and anybody that may at a later date go online and pull our financials or pull our audits. It shows that our fund balance is much higher than what really is.
Right, what it really is.
I know you covered that briefly in your summary.
Right.
But I think it'd be helpful if you're able to walk the board through this a little bit. So if somebody in the community comes up and says, hey, it looks like you have 80% fund balance while you're reporting out 50.
All right, so there's two, a couple pages, you can see this at either page 19 or 20 of the audit.
Let's go, you picked the one that's best.
Let's just go to, just so it's easier to see. Let's go to page 14 and 15 of the audit.
And on board book, that is page, Scott, do you have it? Does anybody have it up yet?
73.
73?
Right, so the problem with the way Cook County distributes its taxes is that it's not like Lake County and DuPage County where we know when we're receiving the money. Cook County kinda, I mean, we have a ballpark, but they kinda distribute as they want and it's not consistent from year to year. The problem with the way we receive our taxes and where the fiscal year ends, which is June, we got a bunch of money in. So we got $10 million in in July and August. Well, for the accrual report, those numbers have to be added to revenues or receivable, so it takes our fund balance to skyrocket. But the problem is, is we don't receive another property tax distribution for seven months down the road. So as the district is, as school starts and the district is spending money to pay salaries, which is most of the expense, your fund balance is just gonna go down and down and down and down until we receive that next property tax payment. So on the accrual side, it, and just, so happens that the year end is June, it just jacks up the fund balances. And that's how we explain it even to the bond council because they were confused at that as well, how that works. So they know that this is not how we sit on a monthly basis. This is just more of a one-time shot that just so happens to be the fiscal year end of the district.
Well, isn't a simple way of explaining it because you're also adjusted for the fact that first two months of the last year were moved on a cruel basis.
Correct.
Prior year, so.
Correct.
On a cash basis, we're doing it from July 1st to June 30th.
Correct.
But on a cruel basis, we're doing it from October 1st until whatever the two months. September 1st.
Correct.
August thirtieth.
That's absolutely correct.
So there's a, just, in the only, that's the revenue part.
Correct.
So if this, if the county moves them up, or shifts them back...
Correct.
It's gonna have a big effect.
Yep.
But on the revenue or expenditure side, the biggest adjustment is for salaries of employees, if they spread them out over the...
Correct.
Twelve-month versus the ten-month.
Correct.
And that just doesn't usually have a big impact versus what the real estate tax receipts are, right?
Absolutely correct.
So Chris, on page fourteen, to put this in layman's, for anybody in the audience that has no accounting background, you're referring to, under the, towards the bottom of the page, where it says total fund balances?
Correct. And, and, and in terms for the district standpoint, the operating funds is what, um, those are the main funds, so that's your first four funds, the, on page fourteen.
And general fund is more or less the education fund.
That's your educational fund and your working cash fund.
Okay.
So on a, on a quick look basis, if we were to say, you know, we're showing a total fund balance of combining all these, it's a twenty-seven point, almost twenty-eight million, right? If we were to pull out the receivable, that's approximation of what truly we're running at a fund balance, right? 'Cause you pulled in as receivable, for, there may be other small receivable, and primarily it's the receivable, which is the primarily, those cash receipts.
Correct. For, in terms of like, how we're just doing right now, uh, it's always just good to look at your cash, uh, balance, so...
Which is where?
Top of the page, cash and investments. That's really where you're sitting right now. The cash is cash, you can adjust cash. It's just what's, that's what you got, less your outstanding checks and deposits and transit.
It's a good approximation of what our true fund balance is...
Right.
That, that we use for a budget basis.
Correct. That's virtually what your cash basis fund balance would be, is just your cash and investment amount.
This is rough. Go ahead. You know, again, people aren't sophisticated, county, they understand this, but everybody in the world, except government agencies, account on an accrual basis, they have, oh, pretty much, unless it's a very small business, right?
No, you're absolutely right.
In fact, there are school districts in the state who are larger and more sophisticated to do their own accounting. They don't rely on the treasurer's system, right?
Correct.
And they'll do it on a accrual basis themselves, right?
Correct.
It's actually a more accurate way of doing it, right?
It is. Like I said earlier, like it matches.
It's just too complicated for a small district with a small staff relying on the county treasurer, cash reports, to do it on a accrual basis.
Correct. I think out of the, uh, my firm audit is probably thirty-two school districts, roughly, um, and add another twenty to twenty-five other municipalities, probably two of those are capable of running their books on an accrual basis.
Okay.
And, and then those two, uh, they're bigger districts where the CFO is a CPA, and then the director of financial services is a CPA, so districts just don't have the capacity to, to do that, just like you said.
So I, I think the reason, just to make, so the cash and investments is the true sense of what the district has in reserves.
Correct.
And at this point, if we're operating on roughly, what's our total budget? Just under twenty-three? Scott, is that roughly?
Twenty, I think it's twenty-five million.
That probably, that sounds probably about right. I don't have the total...
Okay, so basically, we have about forty-eight percent?
Correct.
Forty-seven percent, I mean, we're...
It's pretty good.
Right, but I mean, it's not a point to where, I mean, the state asks for like thirty-three. I mean, we get sometimes a dialogue where, you know, we're not sitting on a large amount of money to, we have enough to cover us for about six months in the event that our taxes are delayed, or we have any issues, correct?
Correct. And just like I said earlier, you know, we're sitting at, say, eleven million dollars in operating funds. We're not getting anything till March, so that number, that your cash is gonna keep going down and down and down till we get that next property tax distribution, which obviously that goes hand in hand with your fund balance going down as well.
All right. And where we got into an issue with that, I think in my first year, was when Cook County was like three months delayed and...
Correct.
Paying out tech, property taxes.
Correct, and now we're, we're starting to run into that problem with now the state categorical payments. This is the first year in, uh, since I've started, uh, doing municipal work where ISBE, on their system, they'll, they'll voucher a payment, so they'll say, uh, you know, in March, we're gonna release, you're good to go, you did what you had to do, we're gonna release your check. They're not releasing these checks for eight, nine months down the road. And I'm seeing it more and more often at other schools. For instance, I do walk Keegan's, School of Shire sixty, obviously in a different financial place, but they're owed upwards of twelve, thirteen million dollars from the state, um, for, for payments. They're actually having to take TAWs out and then do bond issues per year just to stay afloat. So, I mean, it's, it's gotten to the point where it's, it's, that stuff's getting a little scary. So it's always good to see when boards and management do care to make sure these things aren't gonna, you know, put a burden on the district and obviously, most importantly, the students.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that, Chris.
No problem.
Do most districts have, like, six months out? Is that pretty regular? You know, enough fund balance for...
I mean, to be honest, it fluctuates so much depending on where, where you go. I mean, the lower income areas obviously don't have that, um, luxury, where, um, other areas from the North Shore, depending where you go, it, it all depends.
But the state makes a recommendation of how many months or what percentage of your annual...
They do.
...expense in, isn't it?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three, which means four months, right?
Just under four.
So we are...
We have a board policy, and also they, we adopted it, same thing.
So we, our policy and the state target is at least thirty-three percent.
Correct, and that's where that financial profile score comes into play, too. That kind of puts all that together to say that you guys are doing, uh, well.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, so you've got a part out here in, um, factors affecting the future. What, what do you, what are you looking at as the top three?
Page, are you at, Chris?
Oh, this is gonna be page eleven of the audit, it's the management's discussion and analysis. Uh, the top, uh, heading factors affect, affecting the district's future.
Sixty-seven of current Board Book. Factors affecting the district's future.
Scott, do you want to butt in on this a little bit? This is management's position, I can say what I want to say.
Sure.
I mean, to be honest, kind of just what I was talking about with the, the state, this portion is, is, I help with this portion, but it's technically written by management, but, um, just like I said, with the state and, and the position it's in, making sure we get these categorical payments timely would help. Let's hope by next year, they're not stretching it from seven, eight months to over a year, 'cause the, the schools that really need their general state aid and/or categoricals aren't, couldn't be able to function without taking loans out, but, um, I, I do feel that this district does a really good job in, uh, making sure that its values and goals are upon the students and maintaining, um, fiscal responsibility, so, uh, I kind of like the last bullet point, um, about the, you know, the district's Board of Education, and admin staff will continue to investigate ways to reduce expenditures and increase revenues in order to maintain, uh, the financial recognition profile scored through ISBE.
I know the talk around the state is a tax freeze out there. That's something that...
Say what kind of tax?
Property tax freeze, on that, uh, which would not let the district collect CPI on that, you'd be frozen at it, which could impact a couple hundred thousand dollars to the district. And then also, with the new evidence-based funding formula, it's too new to really know how it's gonna impact the district. They're still working out the calculation on that, um, until the state can give us an accurate, uh, formula, what, what is actually gonna be impacted. We don't know if it's gonna truly help us or hurt us with that moving forward.
I'll just go along with that. The, this evidence base you talked about, that's replacing general state aid, if I'm correct, right?
Yes. Yes.
Anything else?
Chris, I think you made it through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. You, you have the electronic copy right there.
Yep.
And so we'll send it out in the Friday update if anybody else wants to ask additional questions.
So it's okay for me now to submit everything to, to ISBE?
It is. The Board has officially reviewed the audit.
Sounds good. But we'll do that tomorrow. And then I'll send you a copy of the submission, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since we have, um...
Maybe it's CAG, maybe it's...
Liz is in the audience, should we go to, uh, the mon resolutions?
Sure, Liz would like to get home, if she likes it. We do not have to vote on approving the audit. Uh, the Board's policy is that before the audit can be submitted, it's reviewed publicly.
Okay.
Because technically, an audit is a third-party vendor doing auditing your financials and practices, so if we approved it, then you could have influence on it.
Got it.
Hi Liz, how are you?
Good evening.
Mary Ann, what page are we on in the Board Book?
Two-eighty-five.
I think we're jumping around here. Two-eighty-five?
I believe so. Is where the resolution sits.
And Liz had, uh, prepared a couple documents for us, I'll let you do.
The ones?
Um, we just had a cover memo where she summarized. Give me one second. Two-eighty-five. So we have the resolutions. Um, Liz, we included also in the Board Packet. We have a cover memo from you, correct?
Correct.
Summarizing the recommendations and the changes. I'm looking for that.
It's on page, uh, two-sixty-three, it starts there. Two-sixty-two, I'm sorry.
Two-hundred-and-sixty-two. Yes, we're good. So go ahead, Liz, why don't you introduce what you want?
Sure. So, um, the first item you're considering is the parameters bond resolution for not to exceed four million eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand general obligation limited tax school bonds. This consists of one million eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand of life safety amend, life safety projects reflected in, uh, Life Safety Amendment twenty-two, and it also reflects three million of bond proceeds. This resolution, as well as the refunding resolution you'll be looking at in a minute, are parameters resolution, in, in that they have outside amounts, uh, that cannot be exceeded. They have a maximum interest rate and maximum levies. This first resolution incorporating both the life safety bonds and the working cash bonds allows for either the ten-year repayment of those limited bonds or the seven-year repayment that we talked about at the prior meeting. So, the resolution is, is good for either option. In my memo, I recommend the seven-year option after we've, you know, discussed it at several meetings, simply because it is less costly in total interest by just under two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars, uh, over the life of the, the bonds, and I also included the, the analysis that we've been looking at, um, answering Dr. Keen's, uh, question on the PV to the, the homeowner. So, whereas the, the interest cost is two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars less for the option with seven years versus ten years, the difference to the homeowner is, uh, only, um, about eight dollars. So, uh, you know, it's not, in homeowner expenditure, a lot different, but over the life of the bonds, it is a, a good chunk of change, and as I mentioned in my memo, what you save in interest on the bond issue results in having higher future flexibility by that same amount within your debt service extension base, if you need to use it from the future.
So the recommendation is seven from the administration, however, the Board can obviously change that to ten. And Liz explained it's about an eight-dollar difference on a three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar, per year.
That's a present value.
Present value.
So that's the difference in today's dollars.
Today's dollars.
Somebody confirm why we did a million eight-sixty for the life safety?
So originally, we were gonna be under two million dollars. We had, we had, um, roughly eighty-six thousand that we completed the granite panel work in last fall, when we finished Exit G.
Okay.
And those bills had been paid out of life safety funds, out of access life safety funds. Once the amendment was approved to do the work, we proceeded with the work, and we had leftover life safety funds from the previous bonds, so we were okay, and we paid, we were okay to pay those out of a life safety account. And so Liz and I discussed that. We don't think it's worth, and plus, we might be over some of the timelines of reimbursing ourselves to the life safety fund, so since we ran under, we were okay using those funds.
And the other couple items that we went back to the state, and they rejected our P on, right?
Correct.
Okay. Could you explain, you said the, the resolution has parameters as to maximum amount of issuance and interest rates?
Correct.
So who's taking the risk on the interest rates if we pass the resolution?
The interest rate is max, cannot exceed five percent.
And what do we think, though, if they were issued right now, it'd probably be a...
An all-in true interest cost for the ten-year of two-ninety-four.
Seven years, what you recommend.
Yeah, and two-seventy-five on the seven-year.
So I guess there's not a great risk, the interest rates go almost double between when we pass the resolution, when we issue the bond? Okay.
The five percent also has to do with like a maximum coupon, 'cause I go on in my memo to discuss, you know, some of you have asked reasonably so, why in the offering document would you see an amount that might look lower than what we're actually going to get in proceeds? And the answer to that is because investors demand bond premium these days, so the premium combined with the paramount provides a proceeds for your project, whether it's the million eight-sixty for life safety, the three million for working cash, plus paying the cost of issuance. Um, so that's why the paramount on the offering document seems lower, and five percent is the coupon that sometimes investors demand as a maximum, not, not more than that based on current market conditions.
Thank you.
And Liz, you have on the next page, the bond rating?
Yes. Congratulations. The district's, uh, bond rating of double A-plus, stable, was confirmed, as well as a management rating of good. So, uh, I'm very appreciative to the time and effort that Dr. Skinkus and Scott, uh, spent with us and the Bond Rating Agency, out of two-hour interview and PowerPoint presentation, um, and sending all your practices and policies, uh, and, uh, to the rating agencies as evidence of your diligence, and very strong rating, just one notch below the very top rating of AAA.
So I still didn't get a good answer on why we didn't get, we have a neighbor that's just northwest of us that has Brookfield, LaGrange Park in its district, and yet they have a better rating than us.
Yeah.
She explained that.
Did you get that, that comparison?
So what was their reason?
The side-by-side? So, if you look at their EAV, it's almost three times as big as two-oh-eight. It's like two billion...
Six billion. They're at an eight, eight billion, or a two billion.
On a full value. So that's the number one reason, is the size of their tax base.
Medium income was double, uh, property value was double.
Right. So, and when you look at that size of property value versus their debt, their debt per capita and debt per EAV ratios are much lower than yours, again, simply because of the size of the base.
Again, we go, you levy the debt, right? You levy to collect the debt.
Right.
So the assumption is, is that our levy is less than, our levy quality is less than their levy quality?
It's just their tax base is bigger.
But you're levying a multiple on that EAV.
Well, I can't speak for the rating agencies, they do their own analysis, but lower debt per capita and lower debt per value, they view as positive, which is why that other district is just one notch higher than you.
So what Gary's question seems very logical to me. The risk to the bondholders is no greater for us than it is for them, regardless of the size of their EAV, their average income and their average house cost, because once we levy the debt, the county collects it, we never touch the money, and it pays off the bonds.
Right.
So I guess is, if I would put this question a different way, it's like, why do the rating agencies not, and analyze it based on that?
Yeah.
Since we can't get the money anyway, right? Where, yes, if you were, if they were general... Where, yes, if you were, if they were general obligation bonds, and if just came into the treasury, our treasury, and we didn't have a specific obligation, it wasn't a set aside to pay it, they're obviously a better credit risk than we are, just looking at the numbers side-by-side. But the fact is, that's not how it's done. We do our levy, the money goes to the county, and it goes directly to the...
Actually, it comes to your treasurer. It does, it's not a direct intercept where it goes from the county to the bond register or paying agent. It comes to your treasurer, and it goes into the bond and interest fund. But if push came to shove...
It goes to the county treasurer, though. I mean, to the township treasurer.
The township's school treasurer.
It never comes in any of our banking accounts.
Right, but they handle all of your funds.
They also handle clients' townships, don't they? So that portion of the risk of whether they're actually going to get paid the way they're supposed to is just as great for the bondholders and lines' township as are for us, because both of those receipts are going to the same township treasurer, and they're paying the same thing. So if the township treasurer doesn't pay, it's just as risky for the LT district bondholders it is for us.
Yeah, but their point is, when, if push comes to shove, and we go into a huge recession again, and your collection rate goes, would likely go down farther than theirs, given that their base is three times bigger than yours. They've got three times more people paying than you do. So that's the simple point there.
And what would be... They have a lot more businesses in there, so likelihood of a recession, you have people who can't, who are going to be in their residential areas, right? And they're not going to necessarily, you know, pack their bags and then leave their house, they want to stay in it.
What's the...
That wasn't true last time around.
Compared to a restaurant? Compared to restaurants, compared to stores, compared to...
I don't know, I know a lot of people who just pulled on states and let their houses go this last time around, a lot.
Compared to things like that, where you have a lot of EAV that's associated with commercial. Anyways, and the other question I had was, is the district overall getting rated, or individual bonds getting rated?
The district overall.
Okay, then why did the fee get split up, assigned to the three different bonds as a methodology?
We just allocated it.
So the fee was twenty-one thousand, and you just allocated it over to three?
Right. But if you issued them separately in different times...
Would it cost us sixty?
It would have caused more for the rating, more for the bond council, and the fee would have been much higher.
What's the spread between a government triple A and double A plus? Do you have any idea?
For municipal bonds?
Yeah.
Five to ten basis points?
So we're talking, and again, we'd take five to ten basis points if we could get it, but it's not a significant difference because you've both pretty highly rated.
You're at the top of the scale.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think before we take any formal action, board needs to decide, are we, just before we read the resolutions, seven or ten-year? And if there's discussion?
I was the only guy with a ten-year last time, but I think, I think I'm still, you know, I'm still thinking about, you know, we talked about the risk and the immediate risk. We're talking about getting money or not getting money. You know, we're spending more every year than we have in the last three years, and unless that's going to change in the next couple of years, we're out of money, you know? So we can raise someone's taxes at sixty dollars, or we can raise it thirty-five dollars. So I, you know, I don't know if I, you know, and I know it's a shorter period, three years. What does it, what does it go up to? Because there's different scales, but I think this last one here is pretty much sixty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-two or something.
Yep, sixty-one, sixty-two.
So over ten years, Liz, is it three fifty-eight?
Six years. Yeah. Three fifty-eight in total for the ten-year, over those ten years, and over those same period of time, three twenty-six on the seven-year. So...
Are you saying it was eight dollars to...
Present value.
Present value basis.
I just think when we dig into, you know, what happens in five years when we want, when we want more money? And now we're getting people up to a hundred dollars, you know, in their brain. The sixty dollars plus, oh, you're going to throw in a thirty dollars on me. Now it's ninety dollars. You guys are killing me.
Or he said if we wanted to do a refer.
Referendum.
Something ever happened for five years. There's no plans of that right now.
Yeah, there's no plan for that. I'm just...
He's forecasting, no doubt, no doubt.
You know, we don't have any more money. He just said the state's not giving us more money, and we're spending more, everybody's getting a raise. Maybe. I mean, I, you know, I was just positive thinking here. I, you know, that's the way I'm, that's why I'm getting to my flat ten-year, thirty-five. That's over.
But you're okay with the district spending an additional quarter of a million dollars that it doesn't need to?
On interest.
The difference in interest. Like, as a taxpayer, I don't want the district spending...
I get that. I'm not, you know, it's against my nature, but I also have to go out there and...
The present value is less than two hundred thousand, probably, right?
Actually, Tim, the present value is two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The total, the total interest is like three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
I mean, you can look at this a bunch of ways. I think if you're going to present this as a referendum issue, or any referendum, it should be, it should be presented in terms of, you know, taxpayers' houses worth two hundred thousand dollars, it's going to cost you this much a year, over how many years? Since we're talking about, as a board, and we're looking at the district expenditures of funds, I think we have to look at it, frame it as the board issue, which means if we go at ten years, we are paying an extra two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars now for that benefit. There's no way I, in my mind, that can be justified. So I'd support the seven-year issue.
I agree with you, John.
I agree.
Well, I think both points are valid. I think Wes' point's valid, people are going to look at what hits my bill on an annual basis to thirty versus sixty. And I think the point's valid too, that at a present value, which people don't think present value, when they're looking at a tax bill, it's only eight dollars, and we're going to save a quarter of a million dollars in interest over the time, so, and I try to rely happily on what our consultants and our administration recommend. Since you're both recommending seven years, I would lean towards doing seven years.
Laura and Gary, the only two haven't commented.
I can see Wes' point. I mean, when we take out a mortgage, we know we're paying a lot more for our house because we spread it over thirty years, because we're looking for the payment that fits, and that's what Wes is doing, he's looking for a payment that fits comfortable. And then, on the other hand, the benefit of seven years is it's paid off, and if we have to borrow more after seven, it gives us a little more opportunity to do that. So, you know, I can support either one. You know, I really don't have an opinion, I can see value in both.
I'm a seven-year person. So I'm a seven-year person.
Okay. So Liz, uh...
Can I say something about Wes' point too? I totally agree with Wes about the money issue. And the way we address this is like we talked about before with the budget, you know, come December, January, we started looking at, we have to cut back on course offerings, not necessarily class sizes, but course offerings, we do that. So we're not running out of money, and we're not going to the, we're not running deficits, and we're not going to have to go for a referendum unless it's absolutely necessary.
Okay, so Liz, I think from hearing a vocal discussion from the board is seven versus ten. And I think you wanted to add one comment?
Yeah, I did, there's, well, I want to ask a question first, and I'll add a comment. The, we're going to, if we, assuming we do this, we're going to adopt the suggested resolution here, that's all for today, right?
Correct.
And two things.
Two resolutions.
Two resolutions, sorry. And, but then there's a tremendously long, like fifty-page set of documents between two of them, which you have a lot of blanks that you fill and all that. That'll be done after the fact by yourself and our interns.
So I got an answer for you, and it's the reason the parameters resolution, there's a dash anywhere where it says, it says twenty, and then there's a dash, is when the board passes this parameters resolution, it gives like a six-month window for the bond sales to occur in the event that something bad happens or the market change, and in the event it's swung into twenty eighteen, that's why the last two numbers aren't filled out.
But I mean, there's a bunch of different things.
Yes, it will all be filled in once the...
And let me just mention something.
Designations.
In these resolutions, there's this thing in the middle, it's called the form of the bond, and it's section seven, and the first resolution, it starts on page fifteen, and it goes all the way through page twenty-one.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun reading.
That's where all those blanks are. What that thing is, is supposed to be an example of what the actual bond looks like.
Okay.
Which is a green sheet of paper, and so that's where most of those blanks are, and those will stay blank. The whole idea is, we're just showing you an example of what the actual bond will be.
And then Gary and I need to be available, you said, Thursday?
Right, so...
Just via phone, via phone, correct?
Via phone. The original plan was to go to market Thursday, and I will have a final answer for you tomorrow. We have a week that is volatile, and that's one of the beauties of a parameters resolution. We have the state of Illinois issuing six billion dollars of bonds tomorrow. They moved up their sale. Tonight is the earliest on our schedule with our approval process that we could come to you with the bond resolution. So depending on how tomorrow goes, we may say, let's look to next week, or maybe the week after, based on market and what our underwriting people are giving us.
We've got better rating in the state, don't we?
Sorry?
We've got better bond rating in the state, don't we?
Better than last year.
No better than the state.
Oh, your bond, yes, this is what they keep telling me. They say, oh, your bond is not, you know, not a good comparison, but you can't overlook the fact that six billion Illinois paper is coming into the market tomorrow, so.
Okay.
The other question...
And it's the same buyer?
You knew that.
Buying that stuff versus buying this stuff?
You knew that, right? But they moved it up, right? We had talked about that.
Yes, we did talk about it.
Yeah, and again, it is different buyers.
And if I recall, we basically only had one buyer last time anyway, is a bank, didn't we?
Well, that's when we did that bank qualified issue. This issue is non-bank qualified, and part of it's taxable, so a bit different buyers. Non-bank qualified because we're over ten million with the refunding, which is not to exceed twenty-three million, and then the taxable three million will have a little bit different buyer. So it's not going to be the same bank-type market this time.
The second question I had, Kevin, is you had looked at the retainer agreement with Chapman and Cutler.
Correct.
And you talked, pushed them back and talked to them about the fees they were going to charge. You were able to get them down about seventeen thousand.
Correct, we saved an additional seventeen thousand. I had a conference call with them, and we were able to use the twenty-fifteen fees. And when you, if you go to page, the sources and uses page on two sixty-eight of board book, the current board book, Mary Ann, if you put that up, it just gives you an idea of sources and uses, use of funds is how much it costs to issue bonds. And so when you see some of the fees to, you know, between the underwriters, the bond council, disclosure council, you know, the fees are rather large, but as Liz clarified earlier, and just to put it in layman's, they sell these actual bonds at a premium, and so the premium dollars cover, so it's not like we're really issuing three million of working cash bonds and only getting two-point something, you know? The premiums cover the cost of issuance, so they're not at the expense of the district.
So the last thing, point I wanted to make is, we did receive a petition from some of the residents, the voters, in our public hearing, in our notice. As is required, we notified the public that ten percent of the voters in the district signed a petition, not the working life safety, but the working cash bonds could be required to be done by referendum. Needed about twenty-four hundred signatures, and the group, the people obtained the signatures got about three hundred and seventy. So they needed ten percent, and it got a little less than one-fifth of the ten percent. And, you know, we all understand, everybody's not going to be favored, just like we're having to discuss for seven and ten years and how much it is, but we do think that in essence, it's supporting the proposition that the voters think we're doing the right thing, because so few, you know, two percent of people are against everything that we've done probably, or more than that in most instances, so, and we don't think that, it's an indication of actually we feel there's support for this issuing the bonds. But we did want to recognize, we know that people did go out to the effort, some people are against the idea, but again, the board will speak for itself when it votes for the resolution, but we did want to recognize the fact, we are aware of that happening, but at least from my perspective, based on the law and how things are done, it's in essence supportive of the proposition of issuing the bonds.
Okay, are we ready for a resolution? Well, we need a motion and a resolution and a second, correct?
Correct.
And Liz, we need to make sure we cover everything correctly, so...
What page is that resolution on?
Is this the one we're supposed to read, Mary Ann?
Page two eight.
Resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed four million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars general obligation limited tax school bonds of Township High School District Number Two Eight, Cook County, Illinois, for the purposes of altering and reconstructing school buildings and purchasing and installing equipment, therein for fire prevention and safety, energy conservation, and school security purposes, and increasing working cash fund of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement with Raymond James and Associates, Inc., in connection with the proposed sale of the bonds. Before I move on, how do we memorialize the fact, whether we're going to go with a seven or a ten-year, if it's not in the resolution?
The resolution allows for either, and I'm going to act based on your direction that you gave me.
But how do we as a board not tell you how to act unless we put in a resolution that it's a seven-year?
If you feel more comfortable making a motion, that would be fine.
I would say just a motion to amend the resolution.
I'll amend, well, I'm not done reading it.
Now, I think this resolution should stand on its own, because it doesn't have a seven or ten-year option in it, it just allows you to do either. And then once we approve this, if you could do a separate, just a motion of the board, that would be...
Does the breakout need to be put in the resolution?
It's actually in the body of the resolution, but in the motion...
Motion.
This is the legal requirement.
All right.
So that's my motion.
Did you finish, you read, finish reading it?
I'll second. Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Now we have to do a resolution for the refunding bonds, right?
Right.
So I'll first do, what's, just give me, bring me one standard, we have one candidate.
Why don't you look at the recommendation for your...
Resolve Board Education Township High School District Two Eight, Cook County, Illinois, approves a seven-year term for the general obligation tax bonds not to exceed four million eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars as discussed during the October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen board meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Miss here?
Go for the vote.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
No.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Now we have to do a resolution for the refunding bonds, right?
Right.
Do you know what page it's on, Mary Ann?
Try, um, three sixty, it's not working.
Three sixty, three twenty-six.
Resolve, resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed twenty-three million dollar general obligation refunding school bonds of Township High School District Number Two Eight, Cook County, Illinois, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds of said school district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds, and authorizing the execution of a bond purchase agreement with Raymond James and Associates, Inc., in connection with the proposed sale of said bonds.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Go for the vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Dr. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Liz, when does the twenty, when does the... Liz, when does the 20, when does the bonds start coming off from the obligation? Is it 2025, the first one we refinanced? I know you had that in your...
The 2015 refi?
Yeah. When did, when did the taxpayers start to see a big savings? 2026 tax year or 2025?
Oh, when, I see, I know what you're asking. When the bonds are retired, 2026 is the last year.
Is when taxpayers would see a significant, like 500...
The year after, so it'd be 2027. And that's when all the bonds are paid off, the referendum bonds, they're free, and the tax relief is $507, something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Just to get you on the record again. So if for some reason negotiations with the zoo, this $3 million isn't used, what we had planned for, how do we get it back to the taxpayers if we decide to do that?
Through tax abatement.
There was two options, I thought.
Two options.
There's a tax abatement, okay.
So, let's say I have $2 million left, and you want to abate the levy down so the taxpayers are no longer paying that. You can do that for as long as you have that money. So you direct the county clerk not to levy the tax for debt, and then you transfer those bond proceeds back into the debt service account, and then they pay it. That's the first option, abatement. Second option is you take whatever money you have left over and invest it in an escrow so it starts paying off, earning interest, and then it will pay off the bonds when they can be called, or the longest bond first. And these bonds are not callable because they're only seven years, okay? So it'll pay off the bond coming due in year seven at maturity, but between the time you decide to pay it off and maturity, it will be invested in U.S. Treasury securities, so it'll be earning some interest. So it will, probably will not, rates are the way they are now, it's not clear that those rates will offset the rate on the bonds, but as interest rates continue to go up, maybe it'll be close. So that would pay off...
Are we allowed to invest in State of Illinois bonds? There's an arbitrage issue there, isn't there?
Unfortunately, Gary, they are...
We're not allowed to invest in State of Illinois bonds.
You can't invest in those because they are low...
The one issue, we got to be clear on, we got to be clear on, right, is we can't 100% reduce the levy, right? Because we're still going to have to levy for the interest portion.
Well, the abatement, you abate both principal and interest.
But we're, but we only have the principal portion.
You only have the principal.
So we would still have to collect for the interest.
Yeah, that's correct. Whereas the deficit, you could earn a little interest.
Or we can invest in State of Illinois bonds and make an arbitrage situation here.
All right, let's keep...
All right.
Thank you very much, Liz. Gary and I will be available by cell phone, just let us know tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so we'll go to...
All right, let's move on to President's Report. President's Report, there's nothing to report out. Let's go to Superintendent's Report.
No update on Curriculum Advisory Council, Facilities Advisory Council. I would assume that we'll meet next in December or January to review the administration's plan on how we will address the newly funded life safety bonds that we laid out. We're still wrapping up and closing out. We talked, we had a construction meeting today. We're getting, collecting closeout documents. We have two punch list items on the roof and just striping to complete in the parking lot. So we'll be wrapping up, and Scott should have closeout construction documents and those construction tracking documents done. We should be able to now close the 2015 one, which was the full stadium project, and the 2017. So we'll have three years of construction documents completed. Personnel Advisory Council, Dr. King's going to sit on the Advisory Council interview team, but we, the plan is to begin interviewing for Assistant Principal of Athletics in November.
Did you already close?
The candidate pool closes October 31st or October 30th?
31st.
We have a lot, we have a couple screenings set up to review those. Policy Advisory Council, there's no update. That's all I have for Superintendent's Report.
I have Principal's Report.
Parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. and 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in the Field House. During this time, parents can pick up their student's report card and visit with as many teachers as they'd like. There's no appointments that are necessary. We also have Bridget Wilmot, our Instructional Technology Coach, available to answer any questions for parents regarding Schoology or Skyward as well. Believe it or not, course selection for the 2018-19 school year is starting next week. The process begins with our current sophomores. The process is first they meet in a large group setting with a guidance counselor, and then, and that will take place for sophomores November 2nd or 3rd, prior to them meeting individually with their assigned guidance counselor during the week of November 6th through the 21st. And so that's for sophomores, current sophomores. Current freshmen will begin the process on November 20th, and then juniors start the second semester. They come back and register right away in January. So we encourage all parents to look at your student's course selection form and review our online curriculum guide, which will be updated on November 1st. We're going to anticipate significant changes, so you can go on now and look early. And that provides specific course information, so as students are looking at graduation requirements or looking at electives, that information is helpful. We're excited that we've been selected as a Google for Education Reference District. So Google for Education Reference District demonstrates excellence and leadership through the innovative use in technology with the Google Suite, as well as Chromebooks, to create positive learning outcomes. So they had reached out to us and invited us to apply for the program due to our integration of technology into the curriculum. And so our application highlighted how our one-to-one initiative improves a student's educational experience. And then in the application, we focused on the research and implementation of our one-to-one initiative, the professional development in regards to technology for the staff, and the outstanding lessons that our teachers have worked really hard to create and implement into the classroom. And so as a reference district, we'll be on their website, and so schools can find our name and reach out to us, and we can provide them guidance on any aspect of either one-to-one school or the Google Suite. So we're very excited about that. The school report card, today we were able to see a preview of the 2017 school report card prior to its release, which will be sometime next week. So we're currently in the process of correcting some of the data, although a lot of the data you have seen already through Board Reports. And Dr. Skinkus will share it with the Board through his Friday update, and then once it becomes finalized, we'll also share it on our websites that parents and community members have easy access to that as well. We are in the process of preparing for Veterans Day, and so students will have an opportunity to honor our military veterans in a personal way on our annual Veterans Day program, which is November 10th from 8:30 to 10:30. And we're seeking veterans that are willing to discuss their service with students and answer questions about their experience. So the program begins with a continental breakfast for veterans, followed by a school-wide assembly honoring the veterans in attendance. And then our veterans visit classrooms, and it's a great opportunity for our students to be able to listen to their experiences in more detail and to ask the veterans questions. It's one of my favorite days of the year. Kids are so respectful, not only in the assembly but in the classrooms as well. So if anyone is watching and is a veteran and would like to attend, they can contact Mary Ann Marty in the district office or John Fields as well. The Fall Play is going to take place in November. It's a Midsummer Night's Dream with an 80s twist on it, and students have been working hard practicing their lines and building the set. So the show is November 9th at 7:00 p.m. and November 10th and 11th at 7:30 p.m. And tickets can be bought in the business office or at the door. And then lastly, tomorrow we have our Fall Band and Orchestra Concert at 7:00 p.m. And so we hope that some of the people that are watching here can come and join us to support some of our fine arts students.
Job Kristen.
Chief Financial Officer.
I'm sorry, I have a question, sort of, you're talking about grants. I don't know if anyone else saw this. I think last week, it was last week, Bill Gates has given away money, and I think the focus was on schools utilizing big data. I may be wrong about this, but since we're starting to do that, is someone like looking at that, or does this stuff get advertised in schools, or do we have to be proactive on it?
No, you have to look, you have to look for that kind of stuff.
Sometimes...
At least from the Gates Foundation.
The Gates, I, we don't have, to be quite honest with you, Dr. King, if the state or someone local sends out a grant, then we'll apply. But we don't have somebody that just researches grant opportunities.
I'm just saying it because it may sort of fit what we're doing, maybe we're investigating in some way.
The Gates Foundation?
Yeah, I'll try to find the...
Send me the article?
Yeah.
Congratulations on the Google thing, that's awesome.
Scott?
Okay, in Board Book, I would like to highlight the September financials. First report that you'll see is the monthly financial report for the month of September, highlighting revenue and expenditures broken down by different items. Following that report is the financial statements showing our position for the entire district, and then also for our operating funds, revenue and expenditures. Following our financial statements is the revenue expense report. As usual, I recommend that you look through that and see which ones are at budget or over budget, and shoot me questions so I can explain those. Following the revenue and expense is the student activity report. I believe there's only one negative that looks significant, and that is in the bookstore. That actually was the purchase of the gym shirts for the students. In October, we'll be the credit back, so next month when you see that report, it should be back to a positive balance. Also in your Board Report is the construction documents. I apologize for the 2015 one for being so tiny. I keep trying to make it so that it can fit. There's just no good way to do it. If I split it on two, then you're going from two pages, and you can't follow it from left to right with everything on it. I am in the process of making a, like a cover page just highlighting each individual project that was there, just summarizing what the overall cost was. Once everything is finalized with all the payments going out and closeout documents, you'll be seeing that in the future here. 2017 construction tracking document is in. They're also highlighting our roof project that we had this summer. And then the last thing in my report is the contract tool, and that just basically highlights some of the key contracts that we have out there. The ones highlighted in yellow would be expiring contracts. If you look, it would be EBC, that's our cooperative that we have, just so the Board knows. If you were to look at trying to get quotes from anything or move to anything, there's a 90-day notice on that. Everyone that has EBC is very happy with the insurance that they have and the programs that they have, and the co-op keeps our costs down. There is 109 districts now in the co-op.
So the Board is, the new Board members, through, second year, the district was previously self-insured for medical insurance, and so we shifted medical and dental over to the EBC cooperative, which like Scott said, is 109 schools, and so this way it helps keep your premiums down. And that's one of the ways the district's going to be able to save money and control its health insurance premiums.
What other options are available? The reason we renewed is to see, should we be looking at something else and giving us a high rating for what we're doing already? Is that an indication we're not going to see what else is out there?
Well, the hard part with going out and soliciting is you got to do a census.
Right.
So the census, you have to have everybody that is insured fill out documentation, and then that's sent to the underwritten to see what your rates would come out at. And they won't send it to the underwriter unless you have 100% of the applications.
How do we do it for EBC? You can never get 100%. How do we do it when we switch to EBC? I'm sure you didn't get 100% of people to do it then.
I wasn't here at that time, but I can, I can research it to see what we've turned in.
There's a lot of smarter people than me, but you don't ever get 100% of anything when you ask for a survey. So I find it hard to believe we did that last time.
Scott just looked into...
I mean, the reason that we force the administration to do this is so that we don't keep just saying, we like who we have, we're not going to take the time to see what's available out there. Because then we're never seeing that there's something advantageous in the market. Now, based on what we know, it was a very good decision, it was recommended by the administration to go to EBC. But the concept is each time it comes up, we're going to take some time to decide. Again, I don't expect to do a census, do you do, but you should at least say there's seven other people out there. If there's only 103 in this one, there's almost 900 school districts in the state. So that means 800 of them are either self-insured or go to somebody else, right? So in my mind, the purpose of this is to take a step back and look and see, here's what we're doing, here's what's available. And if maybe you just look at the rates that you're aware of on the other ones, or say it's going to take 100 hours to do a survey, to do this one, and say, because of that, we recommend not going forward. But I don't think, as a starting point here, we have a list, we like who we have, well, let's move on, because that is exactly why, and you weren't here. That's what we were doing all the time, just keeping the people we had. And the Board said, we want you to look and see if this is still the best alternative available for us. Does that make sense?
No, and I can solicit different independent brokers, and I got to make sure that the insurance is identical to what's in the collective bargaining, do the census, and see what they come up with.
Let's start, let's start by just gathering a pool of other cooperatives and their general rates for a school district our size, so that we can provide the Board of, here's three or four other cooperatives that can handle our school district, and here's a three-year historical trend or five-year historical trend, if you start to put together. Because I think Mr. Walsh is saying it might not be worth doing the census.
Yes, it may not.
Let's first just find out what the competition is or the other providers, and compare some rates and get some general information. We haven't had any issues with EBC, correct?
No.
And the idea of identifying this for the Board once each semester so that they're aware of contracts coming due, so they'll know, one, it helps us make sure we do our RFPs and request for pricing and bids accordingly, but also it gives the Board an idea of what contracts will be coming up or coming across their table. And so with the EBC requiring 90 days' notice of, we probably need to start that sooner than later to make sure, in the event we do identify some great cooperative that we want to move to, we meet all their timelines.
And I think their annual increases have been pretty...
Very, very reasonable.
Since we've done, like, finally. Nobody's faulting the decisions made, who we're using. The purpose of doing this is taking a fresh look on a reoccurring basis to make sure that's still the best alternative for the district. Does that make sense?
No, absolutely.
I think there was one call submitted on the contract tool, why you have it up, and that was to sell one, or call one.
Call one, yeah, that's our landline carrier. This is a tricky one. When you dissect the bill, you get, you get charged for like all these lines. The problem that we have is, we don't know if they're dormant lines, if they're live lines. To probably truly get an accurate picture, you would need someone in to assess the actual system to see what is actually live and what's live. Are we utilizing it? Do you need it? Do you not need it, before you would go out for a request for proposal?
Maybe they'll come and do it. If you tell them, you know, we're thinking of renewing you, but we will need to confirm everything we have.
You're working on that with Mike, don't you?
With Mike, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we should, that's not a very good explanation. We don't know if we're paying for phone lines we're not using.
Oh, you're saying you're looking into that.
We're looking into it, but it, but it is hard though, because they can hide it in the bill, and when I...
That already sounds like a vendor that I don't think is...
Well, I understand, but then like you, I've had some third-party independent people come in, and they will offer, they offer to look at the thing to see, are you getting overcharged for it? Would there be any savings? That may be a possibility to bring someone in first to see what you're actually being charged for.
So you're working on this like you're working on the EBC?
Yes.
Clearly, we need to do something about our phone lines, because we keep getting emails that our phone lines are down.
Now, that's A, that's our, that's AT&amp;T, correct?
That's AT&amp;T's line. That's AT&amp;T's lines that are down, not call one. So the four times that it's been down, it's been four independent items.
You mean events?
The other concern-
Different items that are, like a transistor's gone, a wire was gone, they were all-
Squirrel ate something?
The other concern though is that when I come to like parent night at the beginning of every year, and now this is my eighth year here, teachers say, email me, don't call us, the phones are out here, you never know what's going to happen. Or, I don't, I don't get my phone calls or I don't, I can't, so I don't know what that really means, but-
Well, the good news is is all of our voicemails-
Don't call us, we'll call you, kind of a thing. It's not a great message for parents to hear.
The good news is, is all of our voicemails are also automatically transcribed into emails. So that shouldn't be an excuse.
Very well, that's what I'm hearing.
So for the last couple of years, even when the phones are down and people leave a message, it comes automatically up in everybody's email, so.
Would going to a VoIP solution save us some money?
Voice over IP?
Yeah, we could pool some numbers, I'm sure we're not using them all at once and-
Yeah, I'm working with-
You know, you just shrink your, your pool of numbers, you don't need three lines.
One of the thoughts was is to look and see, could you go with Comcast? Because our internet is much more stable versus the, the phone line.
That would be voice over IP.
So, yeah, would be the voice. So the question then, you know, we got to look at, is it truly stable versus always having it? And can you minimize the four times it went out? You know, I know that's a lot, but like you said, overall, what's, what's the, what's the trade-off?
But the four times, the four times it went out is not related to the contract that's up?
No. It's, it's independent of the contract, it's the old AT&amp;T lines.
Well, can, can we give them an assignment to like fix it?
Every time it's, we call, I call the call one rep and it's escalated as quick as possible. And you keep calling back and the best we can do is actually it's escalated. And-
Do we pay AT&amp;T for service also or do they pay?
We, we pay the call one.
Okay.
Through call one.
On the cell tower revenue, which one is still?
AT&amp;T for the overpayment?
Yeah, when is that going to be resolved?
It is, I want to say, hold on, it's till February 1 of 2019. So not till March 1 of 2019, you'll start seeing-
So you will have, so you'll have some revenue in next year's budget related to that?
Uh, yes.
So when you're budgeting, just back to-
And those ones-
So, so this is a situation where when, when we did the first long ago construction project, the cells used to be, the, the, these, used to be on our chimney and we tore down the chimney or something and now we've created a tower and there was a timeframe where they had to come and move their-
2006 or '08 or, we used to have a cell tower or a small cell tower on the old smoke stack when that was taken down. We negotiated, the administration at the time and the board at the time negotiated the cell tower to be moved from the smoke stack to off on First Avenue. That's the fenced-in trailer that you see in the large cell tower. I believe it was Sprint that installed their communication equipment. And so that's why their payment was so low for several years because they paid for the tower to go up and we were collecting rent from AT&amp;T and Verizon. And there was a period of time for a few years where AT&amp;T was overpaying what their contract rate was. Someone in their office or was, made a mistake and has getting a rate for a different cell tower. And so in order to correct that, we haven't been receiving any revenue from AT&amp;T, but that revenue will start coming in again in 2019. Scott, I thought you had only a few other questions in your financial report.
Yeah, there were a couple of questions on the revenue expense. Our tax collection is at 105 for prior year. On a cash basis, we did receive payments in June and July, I mean, July and August, which hits, as our auditor said, it was accrued back into the audit, but on a cash basis-
Hold on a second, don't confuse everybody. You do this on a cash basis.
Yes.
So don't talk about the accrual that isn't in the statement.
I understand, but then the question was, why is it 105% over? So I just want to restate that we're on a cash basis. If it came in after June 30th, it hits as a prior year tax collection.
Right, but we count it in our, as our current-
And in the audit, it's accrued into-
Right, but our current revenues count that as revenue. Mary Ann, that's paid.
Hold on a second.
So it's part of last year's budget, budgeted revenue?
No, it's not.
No.
We get two collections a year. On this report you give us all the time, the prior one is the first one and the current one is the second one, right?
The current one is the second one, yes.
And the prior one is the first collection.
Mm-hmm.
So this is what you, revenues that you collected versus what you budgeted for the first collection in the, for the year, right?
Yes.
Okay. So now, that's a little bit different from the way you explained it.
If you looked at last year's tax collection for current year was roughly, I think, 93% or 94%.
Right, right.
So then the stuff that came in after June 30th would have made up that. So then this year, it looks like it's over budget.
So I was correct in what I said. I said you collected monies that you had budgeted last year.
Yes.
Right. So, yeah, which leads you to say you had 93% collection rate last year, if you would have moved because of the timing, it came in this year. You're showing it in this year's budget or comparison to budget, which does not have it in there, it had it in last year.
The second collection from last year was 93%, not the overall, right?
No. Our, our overall combined was-
Almost 100%.
Almost 100, yes.
But the section, the second one was lower.
Yes.
Okay, one other question. Why is the, the current 20% higher than the prior? Is in the first collection of each year, so that it's going to be 55% of last year is for the next collection, right?
It will be, hold on, you're-
What did Adrian Tim just say?
No, he's just overall, the way the-
Overall, we do 55 or 45, you put that in the budget.
Yes. Current year is always 55, prior year 45. And basically I take the, I basically take what the 55% is, minus it out, to get my 45% for prior year.
Right, you explained that earlier.
And then there was also a question-
Page, Scott.
Board Book 25, under 10, 12, 54, 10, 51, 22. Basically, that's special education capital outlay. An additional standard had to be purchased for a student at the beginning of the year. I was only told to budget for one standard. And unfortunately, the IEP team, for a budget sake-
Additional special education equipment.
Yes, special education equipment. You know, from a budget standpoint, I'm over budget in that line item.
What's a standard, since you used the term disappointing?
A, a device to help a student actually stand up and support them. So the, that, the one that actually put it over budget was accounted for, the one from '96 coming over with the student wasn't, so.
It's an additional piece of special education equipment, we don't need to identify, right?
Thank you. Okay, and there were no further questions.
Thanks, Scott.
Dr. Skinkis, on the construction on the roofs, did, there was a page 48, you gave the summary budget for the roof projects?
Page 48. Yep.
Now, is that, I mean, is that up current and we're going to be under budget by that amount or how much do you anticipate?
On the roofs?
On the roofs.
We are, we are not using, well, we just talked about that today, we should be at like 55 or 60% or $60,000.
Probably allowance.
Of the allowance was not used.
So we're basically going to say how much or?
About $60,000.
$60,000, okay. Well, that's good news.
And then the stadium project, because it was carried all the way back to '15, if you guys remember, we had roughly $750,000 in allowance because it was about a $7.5 million project. We'll have about 120 savings there.
That's good.
And Pat, you know, we went through that today. And on that project for 2015, we had the $750,000 allowance budget, you know, for change orders or unforeseen conditions. And we only, we were saving, we don't, I think we have unused about 125 we talked about today. When you look at that, like 200 and something thousand was in under, underneath of the field, right? So we spent, you know, just under, just over six and one-third of that was on one, on the field, the new stone, the new drains, right? We got some of that back.
Some back, $75,000.
Right, but a big chunk of that was for that.
There's a, I want to make a positive comment, a suggestion.
Okay.
It's minor. Positive comment, I see that you've guys bought these large pads to protect the track, even more so than last year. That's, I'm glad to see you're doing that. And I noticed this is a minor issue. You look at the sidewalk where this turnstile is on Washington?
Okay.
I mean, some of that's in really bad shape, considering so many people go in there to use that.
We have to do the sidewalk repair program with the Village Brookfield. That's their, that's their reason.
If someone can look at that, because I think, I'd hate to have someone trip and fall and then there's some issue with that. Besides the fact I don't want anyone getting hurt or any kid getting hurt or anything. All right, anyone else coming?
I already, I already brought up this sidewalk bit, you know how I feel about that.
You already brought that up, Wes?
Oh, yeah, I brought up separately.
Okay.
On Washington or Hollywood?
Well, Hollywood, same difference. Same, the sidewalk looks the same, just old and-
Problem is it's not district, I mean technically it's village, we don't, so I, we bought trees for the easements.
We did buy trees.
We did buy trees. So I will talk to the village and see if we can get put on their sidewalk replacement plan or at least they can come and market.
Great.
All right, it's time for visitors' comment. Anyone else in the audience?
No.
Okay, I will have to read this. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the Business School District. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitors' comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. In addition, the Board of Education is interested in receiving suggestions and concerns from members of the community. Any individual may make a suggestion or express a concern at the district or the school office. All suggestions and/or concerns will refer to the appropriate level, level staff member or district administrator who is most able to respond in time of the matter. Each concern or suggestion shall be considered on its merit. An individual who is not satisfied after following the channels of authority may file grievance under the Board Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. Neither this policy nor the Uniform Grievance Procedure creates an independent right to a hearing before the board. For more details, please refer to Board Policy 2:230 Public Participation in Board Education Meetings and Petitions to the Board and Board Policy 8:110 Public Suggestions and Concerns."
It'll take you longer to read that than I was going to say. Bridget Tarrant, do I have to say my address?
No, just your village.
Oh, Brookfield. First, thanks for, board members for spending so much time, twice a month at least, for going over all the budget and everything. It's very tedious. And the other thing I just wanted to say is, the bond resolution that's been, you guys have voted on, I know that people just want to see if they can have community input on it or just you guys decide what the money is for. So I know Ms. Towner, when you were running for the board, you said you wanted community involvement, so we'd really like to see that that was something that's a priority. So you guys can have input from everybody that's paying taxes to the district. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion, informative items. Any member requesting additional discussion items? Look to my left, to my right?
Next week, are you asking for next meeting?
No.
It's at the end.
It's at the end.
And, and, okay.
Yep. All right, we put this on here again, the Police Department Radio.
No update.
Old business, life safety item, capital improvements.
I already talked about that.
We talked about that, we already talked about audit. New business, Matt, any new business?
No new business.
Okay, then we talked about going to matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiation, school safety. All right, we have a second opportunity for visitors to comment now.
Let me make another comment.
Go ahead. And now we have-
Future items.
Future items.
That's in the wrong place.
We put it before closed session, so that-
So that way it's out in public. So do we have any future items? I'll look to my right.
Well, we should save a few minutes to talk about the resolutions that get voted on at the annual conference. So everybody was mailed their packet to read through it. We have the resolution meeting that I go to during the annual meeting.
No, I know what you're talking about, I just, I just don't get that mailed.
I don't think we got them.
Oh, you didn't get them? Okay.
They might, they might first, they might first be coming out. So you got it today?
No, we got it like two meetings ago. I thought Mary handed it to us or maybe just mine.
Oh, nothing was mailed to me, the paperwork that we got for that.
Oh, yeah, Mary Ann gave that out.
Yeah, that's on my line.
Okay, yeah.
So it's all the resolutions that, there is a representative from each district.
Laura serves as our school board representative.
And the Illinois Association of School Boards has a recommendation, now if anybody here believes, you know, feels strongly that we should not support the Illinois Association of School Boards, you know, let me know so that I can either raise my flag or not. So take a few minutes and look over that document and then we should save a few minutes to talk about that.
On the November 14th agenda?
Yeah.
Because of the triple I conferences that following weekend? The immediate weekend, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'll have an idea. You put that under discussion items, Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Okay.
Over my left, any additional future meetings? No?
Yeah.
All right, could I get a resolution to go into closed session?
Resolved, the Board of Education Township Bicycle District 28, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, sale or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations and school safety.
Second? Put a vote, Mary Ann? Yes.
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 Yes. All right. During the meeting, nine o'clock.